...to 24 through what's called a vacant land adjustment. And that number 24 that is referred to in the regulations is a realistic potential for a municipality or RDP. And there are a number of things that the municipality at that time to identify how they're going to address. There's 24 units. There's a project on Calvin Street called Life Opportunities, which I believe is a group home. We have four affordable units there. The Jewish Association for Developmentally Disabled built a three-unit project on Ridgewood Boulevard. And then back in the day, we can't do this anymore, but back in rounds one and two, we were allowed to transfer out a portion of our obligation to another receiving municipality. And we transferred out 11 units to the city of Bayonne who accepted that. And then because of the projects in town were rental projects, we got what was called rental bonus credits. We got six of those. So if you add up those different components, that's how we dealt with the 24 units back then. Round three was supposed to cover from 1999 to 2005. At some point, they changed it to a 10-year period. KOA was then changing their method of how they calculate housing obligations. And it took them 16 years before the Supreme Court ruled that KOA had become dysfunctional because they tried it so many times and they kept getting it wrong. So the state had the courts take over the process completely. The obligation for four years from 1999 to 2025 was determined by the state for Washington Township to be a total of 433 units. Now, township went through the same vacant land adjustment process and reduced that number down to 11. And the way we dealt with the 11 units was a Habitat for Humanity project on Jefferson Street. There's four sale units there. That's been completed. There is a project on Franklin Court for seven family rental units. That is now under construction. And then there was a site on Van Enberg at 463 Van Enberg where the property owner made a monetary contribution of about $325,000. That payment in lieu of constructing affordable units on site. And that money went into our housing trust fund. But in that way, we were dealing with the 11-unit RDP for that round. In addition to that, there were two overlay zones that were put in the plan. One was on Ridgewood Avenue. It's called Stone Mill Gardens. There were 12 units built there. Two or three were affordable units. That project has been constructed. And then where the law used to be, that was also given an overlay zone for about 15 units to the acre. And obviously, that site has not never been developed, but that overlay zone still exists on that property. So that brings us to the current fourth round. With the fourth round, all the rules in the game have changed and changed dramatically. First of all, KOA is now gone. And it's been replaced with Department of Community Affairs. And we were obligated, beginning in the month of January, to take the number that DCA had given us for the fourth round, and that number was 184 units. And we had to decide whether we wanted to accept that number or fight it. And what we chose to do, and that was a new step in the process, by the way. We took that number and we accepted it, but we did point out in our resolution that we knew we were a fully developed municipality and would be seeking another vacant land adjustment, which we had prepared for this round. And just purely coincidentally, that number is 11, just like the third round. Now, I know when I last was with the board, I think I talked about 10. But when we were reworking the numbers in preparation for tonight, I realized that we had to round up, couldn't round down, so it's 11. Which leaves us with what's called an unmet needed difference between our DCA number and our vacant land adjustment number. And that was 173. So what we've initially decided was, well, how do we calculate the RDP, the new RDP? And we looked at two different properties, or three different properties, excuse me, to calculate that. One was on Van Enberg. One was on 660 Pascac Road. And those two sites alone accounted for about 4.08 RDP units. But the regulations now say that we have to look at change circumstances. And we had one change circumstance, and that was the bank property at 370 Pascac Road. You know, the bank is vacated or vacated the site. Developer has already approached the municipality and asked to be part of the plan. So once they were put into play, we had to give consideration to that site. And that added a couple RDP units to our requirement, which brought us up to 11. Now, there is one fly in the ointment, so to speak. Now, there's a provision in the new regulations that says that for all vacant land adjustment municipalities, you're obligated to take 25% of what the language says of the prospective need as it has been adjusted and apply that to your RDP. And there's two or three different schools of thought as to what was meant by that very awkward language in the new legislation. Our position, we take it at face value, where we say the number that this text says is 25% of the prospective need as has been adjusted. In our mind, that means you take 25% of RDP and add whatever that figure is to your RDP calculation. And that's what we've done. And with that, that's what brought us up to the 11-unit figure. Now, I will tell you that the Fair Share Housing Center has taken a totally different position on that. Their position is that you take 25% of unmet need. Now, if that means they would be taking 25% of 173 and adding it to our base RDP number. And as you can see, that would be a heck of a lot larger number that we would have to deal with. We are comfortable with our interpretation. It will not get settled until the courts start reviewing these plans and make a determination as to who is right in terms of the interpretation. I will tell you that quite a number of the affordable housing attorneys who do this on a regular basis are in agreement with the position we are taking. So I am comfortable that we are correct. I would also point out that in that section of the legislation, the words unmet need do not exist anywhere in that section. So from our perspective, it's quite a stretch as to how they're interpreting it. But having said that, that's all up in the air. And we're probably going to have an answer to that question until probably next winter or spring at the earliest, the way these things will play out. And I'll explain that in a moment. In any event, how are we dealing with our modest 11-unit RDP? We have two sites that we are recommending for consideration. One is at 660 Pascac Road. That's those five lots at the northwest corner of Pascac and Washington Avenue. This is another developer that had initially come before the municipality and saw a significantly large number of units. After going back and forth with them on what we felt was appropriate and reasonable, we agreed that we would zone that property for a total of 28 dwellings, townhouse units, which would give us seven units of affordable housing amongst those 28 units. The second site is the bank site that I had mentioned earlier, 370 Pascac Road. That's a much larger property. That's 5.16 acres in size. And there, they had initially submitted a plan for 74 units. We pointed out in the text of the plan that while we will acknowledge that number of units as a potential number, we wanted to see much larger buffers along the perimeter of those properties that were shown in their exhibit. And the text points out that we believe two to four units may be shaved from that site. It was either this morning or yesterday, I forget which already, we received a set of plans from them to indicate how they feel they can accommodate 74 units with a 20-foot buffer around the entire perimeter of the site. That remains to be seen. As I spoke with, one, I spoke with two attorneys on the matter today and pointed out that, you know, if push comes to shove, we will decide what the final number will be during the site plan review process. Because during the site plan review, obviously, things often come up and modifications are made. I can only tell you that just last night, I was in Saddle River where an affordable housing site that was designated for 60 units came in with their site plan and they had 48 units. And so things do get modified. That's all I can say. So the municipality, and this is important for the public to understand, the municipality is obligated by the legislation to adopt and file this plan with the state and an adopted resolution no later than June 30th. The state had given us basically three and a half months to prepare housing plans. And I will tell you, having done this for many, many years, and I'm a special adjudicator on this issue for a lot of judges throughout the state, a typical housing plan usually takes six to nine months to prepare. And that's for a more modest sized community. Larger communities take a lot longer. The state gave us three and a half months to do it. So time is of the essence that the board is obligated to adopt something tonight. The governing body will be obligated to adopt a resolution at their meeting, I believe, next Monday endorsing this plan so it gets filed with the state. And at least that serves to protect the municipality from any potential exclusion or resoning litigation during dependency of the review process. Municipalities can always amend the plan in the future as things go on, but it is really urgent that we adopt a plan now so we are protected from any potential affordable housing litigation. The way this process will play out, beginning July 1, objectors will have two months, the months of July and August, to file objections to a plan. And then beginning September 1, the state's Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program, which is basically six retired judges who have a lot of background in this area, will be reviewing the objections. And technically, the legislation says they are obligated to make a decision. Once they start reviewing a plan and objection, they are obligated to file their recommendation with the affordable housing judge in your vicinity within 10 days. I will tell you, I was an adjudicator for all six of those judges during the first step of the process. And they were supposed to make final decisions no later than March 31st. And some of them took till into early May making those decisions. So if they meet their 10-day deadline, they would be hard pressed to do so. Once they make that recommendation to the affordable housing judge in Superior Court, that judge then reviews it and either accepts it or rejects it. There would likely be a trial on those issues. And because of that, whoever wins, undoubtedly the other side will appeal. So the belief is that all of this process will continue through the winter and probably into the spring before we get final answers on many of these housing plans. And certainly on that issue about that 25% factor, because that's probably the most critical component that is questionable in terms of how you interpret the wording.
Do you, excuse me, Mr. Burgess, do you anticipate a blanket appeal for every plan that's filed by Fair Share Housing due to that language?
Fair Share, in the first step of the process back in January, where we were just deciding whether municipality would accept a number or not, Fair Share Housing Center was a little more circumspect. They filed 68 or 69 objections throughout the state. The New Jersey Builders Association, on the other hand, filed objections to 159 municipalities. So, and there's some overlap, obviously. But having said that, I think it's safe to assume that between those two entities, there will be quite a number of objections. And there may be others, because any interested party can file an objection. And by that, I mean not only Fair Share Housing Center and the Builders Association, but any individual developer, any interested property owner, any interested resident of your community could file an objection to the plan. And so there's that potential. But with that, I think I've touched base on the main components of the plan. The only thing I want to add, because I didn't mention that I adjusted the vacant land adjustment number by one. It doesn't affect the plan at all, but I do have a table reflecting that change. So I will be, I can put one into the record for tonight. And assuming you adopt this plan, it will be incorporated into the document that we are required to file. Now, we are required to file it within 48 hours of the adoption date. So if you adopt it today, we have to file it by Friday. And this is another step by the legislature, I believe, to make it difficult for municipalities and force you to take action immediately. Because if you don't file it, the legislation actually says, if you don't file it within 48 hours, you lose your protective immunity. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody else have a question for Mr. Burgess after that?
I have a few, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead.
The first, and you mentioned it in your comments, and it caught my ear, and only because it's also referenced on page 31. Stone Mill Gardens? There is, I guess, an approved or an agreed density. I didn't, that's still an operating garden center. There's no, there's no constructed units there as far as.
I always told you they started some earthwork on the site. If I'm mistaken.
No.
I'll correct that.
Okay.
I was going to correct you shouldn't say that.
Joe, I think you're confusing. We were talking about Franklin Court. That's where I said they had started.
Ah, thank you.
Stone Mill Gardens is currently undeveloped.
I guess it's the same status as the one below.
Okay.
It operates as a garden center.
31, Table 24, which is an overlay parcel for unmet needs. It's as critical as if it was designated, so they could only have it as a square housing unless they continue. And I'll correct that in the text.
Is it possible to have on Roman numeral two, the members of the working committee that contributed to this document?
We certainly could.
Thank you.
Great. If you could send me that list tomorrow morning so I could ask you to.
Okay.
On table, on page two, Table four? Is there any written agreement? Is there any, do we have anything that's committing these two projects to go forward?
We do not. We do have plans submitted by 370 Pascac Road. And I'm glad you mentioned that because I do have that updated set that reflects that 20-foot buffer. So I will also be inserting that sheet into this document. And it has developers' names on it, certainly suggesting that they're interested, but we do not have a formal agreement in place yet.
And what happens if it falls through? I mean, interest rates are up, you know, cost of building is going up.
The municipality's obligation is to, after this is approved and after the objection process is played out, we have until March of 2026 to adopt all the implementing zoning regulations. And that's what you are obligated to do. You are obligated to zone these properties to enable it to happen. They have a 10, the fourth round goes on for a 10-year period. I will say that at the midpoint, year five, we will be required to write a report to the state indicating what has happened and make a determination if the sites still represent a reasonable opportunity for development, if they have not yet developed. And if we determine that they no longer represent a reasonable opportunity, then we would have to find another site to replace it.
Okay. On the same page, Table two, the 325K. Mr. Mayor, is it possible to get a copy of the account that this is held in? I was under the impression that the monies were not paid, but if we receive them, I'd appreciate a copy of the ledger showing that.
Okay. I believe there is a spending plan in the back of the document. It doesn't identify each of its totals of what was received over time and what we anticipate receiving over time in one of the appendices.
I guess the way it's written, it says payments completed, so I just want to make sure that that's the case. On page 21, and it actually goes on for some of the preceding and some of the following. Are these extrapolated numbers or are these actual numbers?
It's a combination. In many instances, it comes from the 2010 and 2020 census information on the all census years. The American Community Survey Organization provides interim numbers, and those are extrapolations.
Okay. We talked about page 31, Table 24. The question I have on page 36 and 39, the building heights, they seem to be the same height. I mean, are these just preliminary plans?
Yes. The new legislation requires that you identify draft ordinance provisions. So that's what we've done here and for the other site as well. And there is a reference somewhere in that section that says these are preliminary and subject to adjustment as we work with the developers to prepare as the formal plans are prepared.
Okay. On the plan for 370 Pascac, if we're going to iterate the plans, I guess page 41, if these are going to be continually revised, I would just suggest that we push the buildings as close to the municipal facility as possible to try and limit the impact on the houses to the north. So if we could situate and squeeze the south end, I think it would be preferred.
There is a reference in the document about how, again, if these are preliminary, if we have a zoning table for that site as well, let me make that statement for this site.
Okay. And I think the last question I had is on page 42, multi-generational family housing Can you expand on what this is saying? And are we committing to anything? And would you recommend we commit to something, sort of auxiliary buildings?
Well, this is interesting because, again, this is the state working at its finest. They had this provision, but then if you notice after we quote from it, the next paragraph says, and I'll read it, "As of the date of this housing element Fair Share Plan, the Multi-Generational Family Housing Continuity Commission has not yet adopted any recommendations." So we don't know what it's going to say yet. If the legislation says we have to follow whatever it is they have done.
Would we benefit from getting in front of it, or should we wait until?
We really have no idea what they're going to be saying yet. That's the problem. You know, in many instances, it appears the state has put the cart before the horse because they have certain provisions in here that, like this one, where they say you have to follow the provisions of this commission, but the commission hasn't done anything yet. So there's nothing to follow. And there's a couple other instances where the same thing occurs.
So you would not recommend the planning board or the council take up auxiliary buildings or two families, mother, daughter?
Because we don't know what they're going to suggest. We don't know how they're going to suggest it. It's just simply a recommendation or it's going to be a very specific standard that you have to follow. But I think we'd be best served to wait before we start adjusting our ordinances to address something that we just don't know what it says yet. I think most importantly is, here we are obligated to address the entirety of our RDP, which we are doing. And we have built in a little, a small number of excess units to address a portion of unmet need, which also will help in defense of the plan if we have to defend it.
I mean, the reason I focus on that is I look at, on page 20, Table 14, and the value of the housing stock in town. And it's going nowhere but up. And, you know, it is becoming harder and harder for families to enter the town. And I think it's harder for our aged population to maintain their residence. So if there is something that we can do as a planning board, as a council, or that you would recommend, I think that it is something that we should proactively address as opposed to react.
And we will undoubtedly be required to address this issue when the commission finally sets forth a recommendation. So there will be an amendment to this. And that's what will do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
Anybody else on the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Burgess, I just have two things. I think they're just typos on page two, Viviano Property. Shouldn't that be a dollar sign? It was a $325,000 payment. And that would be the same for chart 31. On page 31, rather, I'm sorry.
I see a dollar sign on page one.
It's table two.
No, page two.
Yeah, page two, Table two.
Table two.
Right in the middle, middle column.
That's right. That should be a dollar sign.
And it's the same thing on page 31.
Yeah, the mayor already told me about that.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
You know, it's about a hundred-page document. I mean, it's a progress.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Okay. I guess we go to the public now. Anybody in the audience have any comments?
We have to open.
Sorry. I'm new at this. Okay. I need a motion to open public comments.
So moved.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Anybody in the audience have any comment on what Mr. Burgess just proposed and explained? Yes, ma'am. You go up to the podium, please, and identify yourself. Anybody in the audience have any comment on what Mr. Burgess just proposed and explained? Yes, ma'am. You go up to the podium, please, and identify yourself. Name and address.
Hi, I'm Debbie Carlson. I live on Hoover Avenue. I've been here for about 30 years in Washington Township. Wow, one amazing thing to do to our town is just to continue to build, build. Amazing. I think it's just so great to put affordable housing. Let's just flood the town with kids, with school districts that can't even hold kids in the classrooms. Just keep going, Washington Township. So proud of you. Our town has zero need for affordable housing. According to the article that was written from NewJersey.gov, I was just putting up the article right now. It's on DCA. You can find all the information that's written on here where it says Affordable Housing Obligations for 2025 through 2035, fourth round. Washington Township has zero need for this. So I don't want to hear it. I just think it's a disgrace of what you're going to do to this town. This town is a small-knit community. You add information like this, I think a lot of people feel as angry as I do right now. I think there's other things that you can do with the land that is here. I'm done.
Mr. Burgess, do you want to address that, please?
Yeah, I agree with her. You know, what the state has done to municipalities.
I don't know if she understands the state has done that.
Yeah, it's the state, not the municipality. What the state has done here has forced many fully-developed municipalities to provide a lot of additional housing, which may not have been warranted. The reference to the zero number that that woman had mentioned regards rehabilitation. And then you noticed I didn't talk about rehabilitation because she is correct. Our rehabilitation number is zero. Now, many municipalities have a rehabilitation obligation. As I mentioned earlier, I was in Saddle River last night to show you how ridiculous it is. Saddle River has a 78-unit rehab number. In the third round, they had a four unit. That could be possible. But nothing's changed in Saddle River that the number should have jumped from four to 78. Allen Dale went from 21 in the third round to 151 in the fourth round for rehab. So we've been fortunate that we had zero rehab obligation in the third round, in the second round, and now in the fourth round. So fortunately, that component of the state's requirements, we don't have to deal with because it's an expensive proposition. You are obligated to set aside the equivalent of minimally $10,000 a unit right up front, covering a third of that obligation. So we don't have to do that on our housing trust fund or taxpayers' dollars.
Anybody else? Yes.
Ellen DeGale, Wayne Place, have a question. Can we just do it with senior housing if you had to do it instead of having, you know, families coming in because, again, the school system, Washington School is overfilled, I guess George and all the other schools? Is there any way we could just do senior housing?
Yes. Unfortunately, you're left to do up to 30% of your RDP numbers for seniors. Our RDP number is 11. It's only 11 units to begin with, so you have to do basically a third of that for all the other units, your market rate units that was going to apply.
And you have to use the land that is not developed? You have to, because the state says so, that you have to do this? Or can we just do something else and not use it for? I mean, if, say Hackensack. Hackensack has been overdeveloped, and I see it. I mean, I go there a lot and I see how it's overdeveloped. Paramus is getting so overdeveloped. If they're using their fair-income housing, can they just, like, we just say, give them extra money and have it used for them and not us? Or like they used it with Bayonne?
It's interesting that you would say that. We were very successful with our project, sending money to Bayonne, which is a portion of our obligation. I mean, it's a pass of urban municipalities all over the state were doing that in the first and second round. And that's probably why the state took that ability away from us. It was the one thing that everybody agreed worked well.
So who?
And unfortunately, it was removed from the legislation.
Okay. So who in the state? Is this because the Democratic state, like, the Democrats are doing this? Or is it?
I don't get into the politics of it.
No, but I'm just saying.
The state legislature.
So Murphy did this. So?
The state legislature, going back to 1986, when they created the Council on Affordable Housing, started this process, it goes back to a 1975 Supreme Court case called the Mount Laurel case. This township of Mount Laurel refused to zone property for affordable housing, and a group of residents sued them and went over to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court determined that this is a constitutional obligation. The municipalities cannot just simply zone out the board.
Okay, so?
If I may, another important thing. We're not talking about the hardcore court here. For example, when we talk about moderate-income households, a family of three for moderate income could have close to a $90,000 income and qualify for that affordable housing.
Okay. So I know, like, there are a lot, especially this town, is suing the state. Monveil, Pascac Valley. Is there anything that, if you're suing the state, that why do they need something right away if this should be in litigation for one?
The litigation is proceeding, but the legislation did say that if you want to keep your protection from affordable housing lawsuits, you have to adopt this plan no later than June 30th.
Oh, that's because the new election's coming up?
I'm not going to say that, but you did, and I think this is something that should be placed on the record. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. That's nice.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments?
Hi, Joanie Rogers, Edison Street. Were any studies, and when do they do that, for traffic?
Excuse me, could you talk into the mic?
Studies for traffic and for school impact?
That would all be done during the site plan review process.
Okay. So what happens then if then we get, again, we get the results of that and then we'll have another meeting to decide?
Yeah, well, there would be notice, public hearings for the site plan. Everybody within 200 feet of these sites would receive the notice.
Okay. So we'd notify?
I would assume it goes on the website, so, you know, people get aware of it. If, for example, you know, during the site plan review process, presumably the municipality would hire its own traffic consultant, as an example. And if that person were to say, you need to wind the road or whatever you need to do to make things work, he or she would say that. If he or she determined that the road network cannot handle it and the resulting traffic flow would be at level of service F, which is flunking.
Right, and they'd have to change the road situation.
Then there would be some significant change.
And who pays for that? Who pays for the road changes?
Yeah. It really depends on how far afield the road improvement would have to be, but typically the, any applicant pays for its, let's call it its fair share of the cost.
Fair share of, so not all of it?
Yeah.
So then who pays the other part?
Because it depends if it's a county road, or state road, or a local road.
Right. So we could potentially be the ones to pay for this development to go in, and then we pay for the changes in the road, possibly.
Yeah.
And what about the school impact?
If I can say one thing about that.
Yes.
The amount of traffic from the 28-unit project will be negligible, obviously. It's only 28 units. And even the 70 units on the other site, knowing Pascac Road as I know it, I don't know that the amount of traffic at peak hour will be that dramatically different. Usually, you talk about, if I'm not mistaken, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's about two-thirds of the number at peak hour. So if it's the 70 units, take two-thirds of that, and that would be the number of cars at peak hour.
Right. Two-thirds more than we have now. Yeah. And then also, the other question was with school, same kind of question, which is, so if there's class sizes have to get bigger, another teacher has to be hired, maybe additions a little bit, even if it's a few additions, of small additions, who pays for that?
Well, the taxpayers, including the taxpayers on this site.
Right. And so we don't know for sure, though. Even the corner one with the 28 units down there, that's already a big traffic area. You know, we've got people coming off of.
Come down that street every day.
So you know, you know, the parkway, and then we've got the light, and then we've got people going to Hills. So actually, I don't think it'd be as not noticeable as everyone thinks it would be. Also, school traffic. School traffic, if there's children, we're talking about a lot more school traffic as well in that area if it's coming from that complex. Now, we've got a little juggernaut because we've got the school letting out, and then we've got the complex and people going, you know. So there's definitely going to be some sort of, you know, I would think.
There will be an impact.
Yeah.
You know, the question is, is it so substantial that it changes the levels of service of the road? My experience in terms of school impacts, the kind of townhouse uses that units that are being contemplated don't generate as many public school attendees as people tend to think it will.
Right. Okay. I have one more question, but good thing right now. Okay. I have three. Does the town have the infrastructure, water, sewer, power supply, drainage to support approximately 100 new units/families? And will the school system be overloaded with this housing, which I already had asked a little bit?
In terms of?
But although that is a good question, the overwhelming, because I would want to know, like, how, would it overwhelm them? We need to know, would it overwhelm the school at that point? But that's another. So as for, I'm sorry, the structure, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
In terms of the infrastructure, the town has the infrastructure to accommodate in terms of water and sewer capacity. We talked about the school impact in the general sense, and what was the other issue?
Oh, I'm sorry, infrastructure, water, sewer, power supply, drainage to support that too as well.
The drainage, when they file their site plan, they would be required to show us what the existing flow from the site is, you know, water off the site, and they're required to reduce that level of flow with their revised plans. That's the state requirement.
Okay. And the power supply and all of that, maybe hiring of new lease, anything like that? We would, well, you know, would there be extra anything expense-wise there?
Fractionally, I can tell you that typically the statistics are the suburban communities will have, like, one police officer for every 500 residents. You're not going to get that many residents.
So what happened with that?
Police officer.
Okay. And so basically, with this, no matter what, as taxpayers, if there is any changes in any of those things, we're going to feel the impact financially in some way, even if it's not the whole 100%.
If it's in any way, it would be modest and recognize that there will be a value attached to those units as well, which they will pay up retax.
Yeah, but, yeah, right, exactly, but we would too. Right. And so we don't know. I mean, modest is, you know, we can't really say modest because everybody's got a different financial situation. It's everyone's financial situation.
I had the same question to me in the county municipality, and one of the board members who knew the person who was asking the question said, you have five children, and so that's $20,000. And I tell him, he just said, that's like $20,000 a pop.
Right, right, right.
So it was like, he was pointing out that, you know, even single-family homeowners have an impact on the.
Well, that's it. I mean, they do, but at the same time, this is being added when we really don't feel it needs to be, so that there's a difference. These were established for years, and these were housing.
Unfortunately, and I don't want to sit here and defend the state because that shouldn't be my role, but they have established a program that forces municipalities to address a number. Now, our number was 184, and we reduced it down to 11. And I think that the boards and the governing bodies should give some credit for that significant, significant reduction.
I understand that, and that is good, but people are still seeing that the big amount, and that's still going to weigh on everybody. It's going to raise our taxes possibly, and like they said earlier about young people not being able to live here, that's also something. The taxes go up, that's going to even be harder. So anyway, so that's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. John Ramick, Northgate Road. I might have missed something. I don't really see. So the properties are zoned as residential, is that correct?
The proposal is that they would be zoned for multifamily residential, yes.
Multifamily. So there's no restriction as to how many units?
No, there is. As I mentioned earlier.
Oh, okay.
There's a set of regulatory controls that are preliminary, but they're all spelled out in the document to ensure there's, you know, adequate light air. An open space, women's units, women's building heights, that's what it's in.
So the 74 and the 28 are approved for those?
Not yet.
Of course. What's the next step in this?
Yeah, this is just the first step. Once the planning board adopts this, this becomes just another element of the municipality's master plan. And the governing body working with the planning board has to prepare the detailed ordinances to amend this. And as I mentioned, that doesn't have to happen, it must happen by some date in March of 2026. So there's a period of time for that to work out. And then following the adoption of that, of those ordinances, then a developer, you know, they choose can file a site plan application.
Okay. So then the developer comes with their plans and everything, then there's another hearing on that?
Yes.
And that comes before the planning board or the zoning board?
That would be before the planning board, assuming they comply with all the appropriate regulations.
Yeah. And I missed one thing. So we have a total of 11 units that are for housing. And how would they split between the two properties again?
Well, it's 20% of the total, so of the 70 units, I believe it's 15 on the one site, and on the 28, it's seven units, and that's 22.
And it's 22 or 11?
The total is 22 because we have to deal with a portion of our unmet need, which is that difference between the 184 and the 11 that we're actually.
A lot of numbers, yeah, okay.
There's a lot going on in this product.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's come on up.
There. Excuse me. Amy Zerly, Brayburn Drive. I missed a couple of things when you were talking. Is it, we're looking to develop both pieces of land, or one or the other?
We are looking to rezon both pieces.
Rezon both, okay. All right. And the difference between the 184 and the 11, and the 11, what's our magic number to get the state to fulfill every need or every requirement of the state? Is it 184, and then we're good forever?
Exactly. It is the unmet need, which is the difference, 273. That's more of an aspirational number, and the state in the courts like to see that you're addressing at least some segment of it. I will tell you that statewide, typically, it's about 30 or so percent of that number is being addressed. Some municipalities are high, some, like here, it's lower. But we've built in some additional units to make sure we can point to the tribes to say, reduce at least a segment of our unmet need, but we are fully developing the municipality, and our options are limited.
The space at 370, that's currently a bank and office building now, so that would need to be rezoned as multifamily residential. Could that be rezoned as mixed use?
Theoretically, could. The developer certainly was interested in doing a residential project there, and in order to meet our obligations, we thought that was the way to go.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
It's just more units. Yeah, I can understand. In all likelihood, at some point, I'll be testified before a judge, and I'll be cross-examined by Fair Share Housing Center, and maybe some other objectors, and you want to be able to put your best foot forward. And, you know, I've been doing this for a long time, so I have a sense of, you know, what needs to be done at a minimum to make sure that we can put forth a compelling argument before a judge if it gets to that point.
All right. And the twenty percent that you were mentioning to Mr. Ramick, is that the minimum amount that we would be allowed to stipulate the builder use?
Yes. In, in prior rounds, the regulation was twenty percent if it's going to be for sale housing, and fifteen percent for rental. But in the fourth round, they changed the rules and now it's a strict twenty percent set of something.
Okay. And these houses that are being considered now, um, I mean, we don't know right now, I don't think, if that would be rental or purchase, do we?
No.
Okay, so it could be either way.
Yes.
Okay, all right, that was it, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody else in the audience? Come on up.
There you go. Mike O'Shea, seventeen Viola Terrace. Um, my property abuts right to the back of the bank there. Um, I'm just trying to figure out a few things. So the twenty-two units is what we will hold in total, we won't hold any more than that?
Oh, the, the plan provides four twenty, maximums twenty-two.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to pay back the rest of the one seventy-four at any point in the future?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the, uh, the other developable properties.
Sir, could you speak a little closer to the microphone?
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah. We may get an objection if somebody says, well, I've got a property and I could help meet some of that unmet need, but I will say I'm very comfortable with the vacant land adjustment analysis that we've completed for the township.
Sure.
I think we're in a good position.
Okay.
To limit it.
The, the other undeveloped properties, like, uh, there's a property next to the school, the old horse farm, things of that nature, would those ever come into play with this stuff?
Yeah, some of those sites are either, now, I'll give that to someone off the top of my head, if I'm getting the general answer.
Yeah.
They're either impacted by environmental constraints, like steep slopes or wetlands or floodplains, they, they get eliminated from any consideration.
Okay, so they wouldn't be in, like, a, we're overbuilt, we keep getting overbuilt situation?
Correct. And also, some sites were calculated as part of a prior round obligation.
Okay.
You don't get to count that. We don't have to count that again, that would be double counted.
But they haven't been built, so would they have to be built?
And, um, if the site, in one instance, the site is zoned, is an overlay zone for affordable housing, so theoretically, for example, the former Y property theoretically could come in with a project.
So at some point, that could end up with.
Prior round.
A large development on it also. Okay. Um, and then, um, as far as tonight's call, that, if that has to be made tonight, right, in order to fit into the timeline?
Yes, yes, because that, that's the compelling thing that is forcing every municipality to move quickly.
What's our rights on the objection side after this? What are, what are, what's?
Well, if, if we assume that we get some objections, um, we will have to weigh what, what those objections are all about, see if they make sense or not. I could tell you, I've already received in some other municipalities, some objections that I thought were somewhat far-fetched, um, so in a way, it was, it was so excessive because it makes it easier to, to knock.
Right.
Right, you know, we have to judge each one on its merits and see how we can pick our arguments.
And then if it's, if it's, um, it's only twenty-two units that we do owe, does that project have to be so large? Does it have to have seventy-five units? Can it be reduced down to?
It's really difficult to hear, everybody.
So, sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm asking if the units have to be at the seventy mark, you know, like, do we have to have such a large development there if we really only owe twenty-two units in that, in that space?
Through that number that we get to the twenty-two.
Because of the percentage?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Richard Miller. I live at ten Brayburn Drive in Township in Northgate. I have a few questions I wanted to ask, if I may. Uh, the property that abuts us there on Washington and Pascak, how big is that piece of property?
Two point one four acres.
Two point one four, okay. And then also the property that's been already approved, I, I understand it's been approved across from the pond down on Pascak Road, they're going to be developing there, that was approved, like, eighteen units, I think?
No, that, that, that got turned down by the zoning board.
Oh, it got turned down?
Yeah.
Okay. And how big, how big was that property?
That's about one point two acres.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now, the proposal for the units, uh, on Washington and Pascak, are they all going to be single-level homes, or are we talking about?
Two-story building.
Two-story building. Okay, so to be units on a second floor and a first floor?
Yes.
So that would completely?
It could be townhouses, you know, and the townhouses would be multiple stories anywhere.
Well, townhomes would be one thing, but, you know, now, now we're talking two-level sort of apartments, and I assume you would probably put parking underneath it or something like that.
Right.
So it'd raise it again another, another level?
Now, let me check, I think we, we maintained a thirty-five foot building, hold on. It's thirty, that's correct, Joe. Thirty-five. Thirty-five? Thank you.
Should be thirty-five.
Which is what's just around the area, so.
Okay. Uh, but I don't think we, not to my knowledge, I don't think we have any, like, two-level buildings in this area, anywhere, that I can think of.
No, that's a single-family house.
Yeah. Yeah, well, single families are one thing, and townhomes are, townhomes are another thing, but what I'm talking about, will it be, like, is it twenty-four or twenty-eight units that we said?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, would it be twenty-eight units with twenty-eight entrances, or would it be fourteen and fourteen and, you know?
It will depend on the architect who designs the project in the end.
Okay. But I think that would look, wouldn't look too nice in that area, you know?
We will be building into the final draft a whole host of architectural design standards and design standards to make sure that.
And we'll have the option to, to view them also? I'm not saying we can knock it down.
There will be a public hearing on the ordinance itself, even before you see the site plan, and, um, you know, I'll, I'll click on the website, as well, so you'll know when that will happen, and we'll have a public meeting about that as well.
Okay, and, and I do understand the public housing, I, I know what you go through at the state level, but, uh, having built the Chelseaa just recently, doesn't that help us with our affordable housing? I mean, it's a senior care center, basically.
That was part of a prior round's objective.
Oh, so we don't count that because it happened before time?
It counted previously for a prior round.
Oh, okay. So we maybe would have something to look forward to like this again in another couple of years, so.
Twenty thirty-five. That's the next round start.
Okay. Uh, I think that's it right now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Hi, so, um, my name's Patricia Madica, I live on Colonial Boulevard. Uh, I just need, I guess, a little clarification. Um, as I understand it, these fair housing laws exist in the context of we have to include low-income housing when new building is being done. Is, is there some change to that law? So in other words, when, when, when you decide to build housing in a town, for whatever reason, a certain percentage of it has to be low-income?
Yeah, and these laws go back to, uh, to the nineteen seventy-five.
Right, I understand that, that they go, but, but I, I guess, so what's, what's, I don't under, so, for clarity, are we required to build right now?
You were required to zone to enable it to happen. The municipality does not build the units.
Right, so, so I, I guess I need a little clarity on what the, the rule is, what the law is.
Well, the, the law says, uh, you've got to provide a certain level, a certain number of units. You've heard how I talked about how we have legitimately, inconsistent with the rules, reduced your obligation from one eighty-four to eleven.
Right.
Okay, so we've got to enable that. The rules also say you've got to make some effort to address that unmet need, which is a hundred and seventy-three units, so we've thought eleven units into addressing that, a very small percentage in relation to what most municipalities do with that, a function of how you're fully developed. Um, so those things you have to do, you have to zone to make, to enable it to happen. If the property owner ends up not building it, like was mentioned on the one site, um, so be it. You know, you can't force them to, to build if they don't want to.
It's, it's still not really addressing my question. My question is, are we required to build right now at all? Is there a law that says we have to build more housing now?
Joe, can I maybe, if, if these two parcels of land did not come up, maybe you can answer what we would have done in that case?
If, if, for example, that bank wasn't going to vacate, it'd be torn down, um, we would have never included that in our site, in our vacant land. RDP number would have dropped even much lower. Um, the municipalities are not required to do the building. They are only required to zone some properties to address that number, and if developers decide they don't want to build for whatever reason, or the property owner decides he just doesn't want to, she doesn't want to sell to a developer, so be it. As I said earlier, at the five-year mark, at the midpoint, you have to do a, a report to the state to indicate what's happened with your sites. And in years past, we have submitted letters that said, none of our affordable housing sites have been developed, but they still represent a reasonable opportunity if someone were to come along in this criteria to make that determination. Um, but the towns themselves have not been required themselves to build the units if nobody else does.
So, so basically, then, the reason that this whole plan has come up to begin with is because we have properties that are, have been vacated, and we are now, because of that, we have to designate them as residential properties?
Uh, essentially, because, um, there's a few other sites that contributed to the RDP number, but in large measure, you are correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience have any comments?
Hi, Vicki Beck, sixteen Viola Terrace. So in essence, this is a done deal. In essence, your comment about the family of five kids paying, getting twenty thousand dollars a pop back from the town for the education was not the most sensitive thing in the world. I don't have kids. Don't have them. Been here for thirty-four years, my kids are out of the systems for, what, fifteen, twenty years, maybe? Um, but yeah, I'm paying my taxes. To get out of my street, you know, all these little street things that you do, it's not going to affect the street. To get out of Pascak, for the past week and a half, I've been timing to get out of Crest, onto Pascak, Pascak and make a left-hand turn. Fifteen minutes, seventeen minutes, fourteen minutes, doesn't matter the time of day, I'm not doing, I'm not going to work, it doesn't matter the time of day. So I have to go around, up Jackson, down Manhattan, and wait for the light, and then come all the way down, because there's no way to do it. But this development at three seventy is not going to affect traffic. Washington School, we all know, is getting overcrowded. The kid down the street at, at the corner of Crest and Viola, when they bought the house, they had a little kid. They registered the child for school where a block and a half away from Washington School. They had to go to George School because Washington was overcrowded. So now we're building seventy-four townhomes on the Washington School side. Maybe they'll go to George, maybe they'll go to Berkeley, but these townhouses are not going to have children, that's what we were just told. I mean, that's amazing. I, I don't, I can't believe that this, first of all, just came up on Facebook. Amazing, just amazing. It just came up on Facebook, and now we're told this is just going to happen, so sit back and wait. And what one of the women said, shame on Washington Township. This is not a surprise. This is not a surprise. And to downplay how much this is going to cost us, shame on you. And shame on this planning board. I've been active in this town for thirty-four years. This is just a shock, a surprise, and this is going to affect the property value of my house that I thought I was retiring from. Thank you.
Hopefully everyone can hear me. My name is Declan Gorley, I live on Pascak Road, four twenty-seven Pascak. Maybe just outside the two hundred feet from where I'm required to get noticed, but found out through Facebook. Uh, when I first read about this on Facebook, obviously very annoyed, frustrated, hearing the opening comments, I understand maybe the state has tied our hands a little bit, it sounds like, forced us into a corner, maybe we're forced to do the things we're doing. My first question is, did we go to the, the landowners for those two properties and propose this, or is this coming to the town?
Um, the landowners came to the town.
Okay. Um, and I guess, so what this would be doing would be changing the master plan for the town for future building on those properties, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So how easy does this make it for future, so we, let's pretend this all goes through as planned, and two years from now, there's these hundred units within, within a quarter-mile of each other on Pascak Road, and the town continues to be overdeveloped, which I'll reiterate that, overdeveloped, it seems like the town never missed the chance to develop anymore. Again, maybe this time we're being forced, but it seems like we've gotten into, into the business of being land developers all of a sudden, buy everything and have to develop everything. Um, but what is the future precedent for future developers that come in when another property goes up for sale on Pascak, and they get to a point and say, well, everyone around here is a, you know, a townhouse, why can't I be a townhouse? It's not reasonable to expect that there's, how many condo associations within a quarter-mile on Pascak? What's going to stop the next guy from coming and doing the same exact thing?
That is the most difficult question, because any property owner can file an application and seek a rezoning, but that doesn't mean that they would get it. Um, the criteria spelled out in the state legislation is pretty specific in terms of how you would, how, how much you go about that. I'm comfortable knowing that, count as I know it, that you'd be hard, you'd be hard-pressed to overcome the fact that we have a solid plan that presumably a judge will give this approval on, and once you get that approval, at least you are protecting yourself to the maximum, maximum extent that you can.
Okay.
And I agree with basically all the comments that have been made about how this plays out, because the state, I think, is kind of disservice by setting up these rules and regulations and numbers, and then telling towns that you have a very limited amount of time to prepare.
Right.
And that's what's happened here. Typically, a decent housing plan takes six to nine months to prepare. They gave us three and a half months to do it, and.
Well, I understand that, I respect that, but at the same time, the fact they gave us three and a half months doesn't mean I, who have to live in my house for the next, God willing, thirty-five, forty years, or maybe longer, I have to deal with that now as a repercussion of that, and so we don't have to rush forward. I get that you maybe feel that we have to, but I don't want to make sure, this sounds like there'll be rubber stamp tonight, by the way, and I get that, kind of feel like we've been forced to do this, now we have to move and make an action. But my real question is, the next person that comes, how much easier does it make it to say, well, at six sixty, they got a condo, and at three seventy, they got a condo, here I am at whatever number, five hundred Pascak Road, why can't I be a condo association as well? They're all around me now. Does this not make it a lot easier for that?
I don't think it does, because assuming that we get a judge to give us our judgment of compliance and repose. of compliance and repose, and you are supposedly protected from future affordable housing litigation. Now, having said that, there have been instances where towns had to struggle with some additional development.
But I'm not just talking about affordable housing, I'm talking about the next guy that wants to build townhouses.
There would be a requirement. There's a, what's called a mandatory set aside ordinance that will be adopted that will require anybody building multifamily housing has to set aside 20% of the units that are affordable.
Okay. And the current master plan, you can't build townhouses, if I'm reading it right, without having at least a two and a half acre lot, correct? Is that right? I believe so.
I think that's the minimum, but I'm not bad for saying-
So the corner lot at Seasons is just over two?
Yeah.
So does this open the door for future, again, the same idea, for future people to come in and say, we don't need to do two and a half, quarter acres anymore, now we can do with two acres, or an acre and a half?
I think, again, having the judgment of compliance and repose from the courts helps in large measure to protect you there.
Okay. And I guess, to kind of hammer home the point regarding the overcrowding, I do live close enough to Washington School, my daughter's in second grade there now, at George School. I could throw a football to Washington School, we go to George School, I'm happy with George School, but the fact we had to go to George School when we literally can, I mean, it's probably 300 feet from a house, is kind of strange. But this is not just me, this is apparently going on all over the west side of town, east side of town, whatever the side of town, Washington side of town, people are being sent over to George School. And this is not about to make that problem any easier if we have 150 units within the space of three years potentially being built. And not only the schools, again, this might not be my problem, this might be down the road, but my kids in sports, and just this past year, every time we turn around, we're getting to shuffle around fields, games aren't being played, they're getting canceled because we don't have enough sports fields for the kids in town. Again, maybe not something that most people here are worried about, but as a father of a second grader, for the next 10 years of my life, that's something I do care about. So I don't want to hear that four years from now, we can't play sports because we don't have enough fields, because 150 new units came to town that we just, you know, sat idly by and watched happen. Again, I know I'm venting, not trying to take my frustration on you, you are here, unfortunate the state, maybe we dealt you a raw hand, but I had to be heard on the issue because I do think it's kind of ridiculous.
I appreciate it. I'm, look, I'm going around the state doing these meetings, and I'm hearing the exact same thing from north to south. We do a lot of town in Birmingham, we're all the way down to Charlie Hill doing plans, and I'm hearing it everywhere. And it's unfortunate, dealing with it in my town too.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a comment?
Hi, Irene Finargian, I'm over on Hoover Avenue. I have a question related to the 22 units that are identified for the affordable housing. Of those 22, do we under, do we know how many will be fully accessible?
They would be deemed, all of those, all of those 22 would be required to be deemed restricted, and when that deemed restriction is imposed, it can only be occupied by low and moderate income households.
That's not, that wasn't my question.
You mean ADA?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, misunderstood completely what you were asking. There's a certain percentage that has to be ADA accessible.
Of the entire property, or just the 22?
The entire property.
Okay. Do we know how many of the entire property are going to be single-bedroom units, two-bedroom units?
The regulation, and it's put out in the plan, the legislation says that no more than 20% can be one bedrooms, 20% have to be three bedrooms, and the rest can be two bedrooms.
And the 20% for the affordable housing is a mix of those-
Yes.
-combinations? Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else in the audience have any comments?
Both of them generally would say, just give it my opinion. So if we have a certain amount that's affordable housing, right, and then the rest is whatever, some people, right? Okay, so what if we don't want that extra? Like, so let's say, okay, so the state's making us tie our hands a little, so then you have all the other housing units, right? So how do we get that less? And whose jurisdiction is that? Who stops that? Is it the town? Do we, like, how does that work? Whose ability is that for-
The only way-
To make it less housing units?
The only way you can make it less is if the municipality were willing to build the units themselves. And if you were willing to build 22 affordable units in a 100% project, affordable, that was, you wouldn't get deemed market rate.
All the, the other units that come in with that.
But then, with that, that's the one time that you're doing that, the municipality has to set the timeframe within which the actual units would be built, they want to see it built then.
And the municipalities would be, oh, okay.
And then you're on the hook for it, yes.
So otherwise, so otherwise, we just, we're up, basically, we're at the mercy then of the developer who does these units, and then they can do whatever around those, have those affordable housing units, the amounts, pretty much.
The philosophy is, it seems they're going to build the affordable units, they need for market rate units, for affordable, to be able to pay for the affordable units, which are technically a-
So to pay for the affordable, they have to put in the other ones?
Right.
And they can even put in extra, though? They can put in enough to afford the other and extra?
Well, no, it's 20% in that overtime would determine that for market rate will help pay for them, for market rate will help pay for one affordable unit.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, Jessica Hee, I'm living in the Mitchell Drive. My question is, because I'm new to this kind of thing, how do you define the affordable housing? Is the standard different for different towns?
No, the standard is basically the same for each housing region. And when, if a project is built, there's a process whereby there's a public notice to make people aware that these units are available. The town will have an administrative agent who will publish in fact that the affordable units are now available, and people can sign up and try to get it. Usually, there's such a rush for such units, the towns end up holding a lottery for them.
No, what I try to understand is, when you say, say, we have 20 units, and maybe half of them qualify for, for the house.
20%.
It doesn't matter, I just want to know the standard. So you have to have a standard to say, well, this number, they qualify for affordable housing, right? But this standard is that different town has different standard? For example, one unit here, you can define as affordable housing, if you move the same unit to different town, maybe it's not?
Okay. Our, it's broken down by the six housing regions in the state. So for example, in our housing region, as I said earlier, we're a three, three-person moderate-income household, could have an income of about $90,000. If you're in the Somerset County, you could have up to $106,000, I believe, and still qualify for a moderate-income household.
Okay, so New Jersey has six, six regions, different?
Yes.
I see.
In South Jersey, the numbers are a lot less, it's in country, less there.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Christine La Paglia, I live at 750 Wayne Place. Now, the unit, the 28 units that are going over by, are proposed to be going over by Seasons, those are, since that's under two and a half acres of land, it's going to be like an apartment building and not townhomes?
It could be either.
I thought that you said you needed to have two and a half acres to have townhomes.
No, the current ordinance is for that, but with this plan, we're designating that particular site to allow it to own zone.
Okay. And then regardless what goes in there, what is going to be the composition? Are those going to be single-family apartments, like one-bedroom, two-bedroom?
There'll be a combination, as I said earlier, up to 20% of each unit will be one-bedroom, 20% will have to be three-bedroom, and then the rest can be two-bedrooms.
Because three-bedroom apartments are definitely going to impact our school system. And I live on the block that approaches Washington School, and I can tell you, the traffic pattern there is a disaster. And I don't think it can accommodate what we have currently, let alone 100 new families swarming into town.
Yeah. I hear that wherever I go, and there is going to be some impact, but unfortunately, the state, the courts have said that municipalities can't deny these projects based on school impacts.
My other question is, when the other resident was asking about the, do we have enough water? I work in Montvale, and Montvale has recently developed to a lot of it because of low-income housing. And Montvale has a big problem now with water, and they have to put in water towers now to accommodate all the new builds. How do we know? Did we contact Viola? Do we know for a fact we have enough water that we're not going to have to put up a water tower after all these projects?
There was a preliminary discussion about that, I will tell you, knowing Montvale, as I know it. They have had a tremendous number of units, they would have loved to have been able to segregate in 28 and 70. They've got quite a few hundred, in fact, quite a few hundred.
Okay. But so we know for sure that the water's not going to be impacted?
Well, that will be confirmed during this cycle and review process, but the preliminary conversation we had is insufficient.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments from the audience? Okay.
Bill, before you close the public session, I'd like to make a statement.
Sure, go ahead.
We sit up here, we're your friends and neighbors too, we live in the town, we feel the pain the same as you do. This is a bitter pill, I won't speak for my fellow board members, this is a bitter pill to swallow, but it's being imposed by the state. The implications, as Joe has said, if we don't approve this now, could be catastrophic because we lose our repose, Joe, for the next 10 years. And then, you know, we could end up with triple the units over the next 10 years. So it is important, the township has done well in the prior rounds, but, you know, you all know, you drive around, you see these huge developments going up in other towns. So the township has done very well, even in this round, we're still doing very well. If you look at other towns, you know, they are talking hundreds of units. So again, I think it's a little unfair to attack the board personally, when, you know, we are your friends and neighbors. This is something that we have to do to protect the township long-term. And so I ask you to keep that in mind, you know, when we take our vote. Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Any other comments on the board?
I would just reiterate what the mayor said, you know, as the council representative on the planning board and participating in council meetings, you know, we've had plenty of discussion with Mr. Burgess, with the mayor, with legal representation, just in these two sites, the initial proposals for the number of units far exceeded what you see on these final documents. You know, I don't know if it's for public discussion, these negotiations, but I will tell you, far exceed the numbers that we see here. It is not ideal, but it is something that our hands are tied. And we also have, there are individuals who own these properties and have some right to develop them. And within the construct of state law and the zoning and planning constructs in the township, that's how they choose to develop it, you know? They chose not to continue as a office building, there is an opportunity for them to make money, and some of these are businesses, you know? And we are trying to operate, you know, the Rubik's Cube of regulations, what's best for the town, and, you know, I think the council has done a good job, I think the mayor has done a good job in bringing these opportunities to us and talking them through. So I would, you know, that would be my comment about the development, these two developments that we have before us.
I don't think we're attacking you, as you know, it's, it's a small town, and developments like this take away the, 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 the aspect of a small town, and it just changes the dynamic. That's what I think we're all upset about, not that we're attacking anybody. I love this town, it's a beautiful town, I tell people I live in downtown of Washington, whoa, it's such a friggin' town, but then you add elements like this, it just brings down the value and the, and the aspect and the look of the town. To add parts, add things that kids could use, that people could use, I think, and I understand the laws of the rules, those that accommodate people and low-income housing, and it's, it's a disgrace, it's so sad, because it's just not what a small town is.
But it's state mandated, and we, there's not much we can do.
I'm sorry, I'm not yelling, I'm, I'm upset.
We are too.
Yes, we share it.
We, we agree with you, I've lived in the town for 53 years.
I've been in here over 45 years.
I've seen trees and vacant properties disappear when I was younger, and we played and rode my bike in there. I'm, I'm with the community. I don't want any development, personally. But we're mandated by the state, so if we don't pass this today, these numbers are going to go up higher. We're going to have unscrupulous lawyers like we had in the past come fight and sue the town, and, and they gave us a hard time and put us through a wringer. And if this doesn't happen, it's going to be, it could potentially be worse.
Well, can they be smaller than what's actually placed on here? I mean, I'm sure builders want to make as much money as they can. I wish I was a builder, I'd be so happy with all that money, but can they make them smaller and not accommodate so many people?
No apartment buildings, you don't hear apartment buildings at all?
No, they're having a tough time.
Was there a consideration for group homes? For individuals with developmental disability? You'd have had six to meet your requirement, zip homes.
We, we did some research with group homes, with the New Concepts for Living out on 17. Unfortunately, the town would have to own property that we would donate to them, and then they would build the facility, but the town does not own any suitable facilities. We reviewed some of the town properties with them, and they were not suitable for what they were looking for.
Was there consideration of buying the current properties and then donating them? Would that have saved money?
There wasn't, and so I'm about to speculate to say, the developers are paying a pretty penny for both of these properties, I don't know that the town could have competed with that's a compete, with, with those offers that the developers are making to put these, these communities in.
There shouldn't be any, any misconstructions about that.
That's a reminder, people are going to speak, they need to be at the podiums, I was recording for the record.
Yeah, come up to the podium, please, yeah.
So are we able to look at these plans? So especially, we, we don't want apartment buildings in this town at all. So does people in this town have a right to see the plans and what we can vote on, which they're going to develop anyway, that we could vote on it? Because, as I said, I guarantee everybody here, they don't want apartment houses at all. We're not living in, you know, like Hackensack and so forth, West New York and all that. This is a nice town, and we want it to be beautiful. And if you're going to make it, we want it beautiful. We don't, townhouses are great, but not apartment houses.
The, the units at Valley Bank will be townhouses. The units at Pascak will be apartments, as will the ones being currently constructed at Franklin Court that we settled in the last round, they will also be apartments. And so again, these things are being forced upon us, and again, Joe, please correct me, we don't have much of a choice to say whether the town wants to see apartments versus townhouses.
Yeah, your, your hands are tied on that issue.
Yeah.
How about condos?
Same, no matter what, we, we can't dictate.
The apartments may or may not have to be condos. And the architectural design standard that we're going to put in place- And the architectural design standard that we're going to put in place will try to have them mirror a townhouse look. But they might be, you know, one of the ones.
As long as it doesn't look like, you know, those high apartment houses that you see in West New York and Union City and all that?
No, that, that will not happen. On-site review, we won't allow that.
At least, do we get to see the plans?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, is there anyone else before we move on? Okay. All right, I get a motion to close the public portion of the meeting, please.
Motion. One second.
Okay. Okay, so now we need a motion to vote. All right, now we need a motion to approve the 2025 housing element and fair sharing plan, amending the master plan.
With the adjustments that we discussed earlier.
Yeah, with the adjustments that we discussed earlier in that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to accept it with the corrections that Mr. Burgess has to add.
Okay. Go ahead, a second.
I'll second it.
Second it, okay.
Are we voting on 2510?
Yes. Okay, we'll do roll call, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Colito?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
Mr. Wozieransky?
Yes.
Councilman Almond?
Yes.
Mayor Kalamari?
Yes.
Chairman Sabato?
Yep.
Okay. Grace, if you could email me a signed copy of our resolutions tomorrow morning. I will make the adjustments tomorrow and then I will forward everything to the state and to the county if required.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the application of George Tadaros for demolition of the existing house and new proposed residence to be located at 311 Walnut Street, Block 4415, Lot 4. I guess they're ready. He's in Maw.
He'll be blaming you for the next 10 years.
No, so firstly, present your case, your questions, and then, and then sign.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Capizzi. On behalf of the applicant, this is a project at 311 Walnut Street for the applicant GE Builders LLC. What we're before the board for this evening is the property is developed with an existing single-family dwelling that the owner seeks to demolish and construct a new single-family dwelling at the property. Your ordinance requires an appearance before the planning board. Anytime a homeowner seeks to raise more than 50% of a dwelling, that's the reason why we're before the board this evening. Tom Sterns, our civil engineer, has prepared a site plan that illustrates the new form of development. It's a fully conforming, single-family dwelling. No variances are required. We have Mr. Azalina's letter of today's date. Mr. Sterns has spoken to Mr. Azalina about that letter. And we stipulate for the record that all of the technical comments that Mr. Azalina has raised will be addressed through a way of any additional submittals through the building department and/or his office. There are no questions of me, Mr. Chairman, I can have Mr. Sterns go through the plan.
Okay. I know you're in a hurry, so we'll, we'll go to Mr. Stern. But I think we need, do we need to have him sworn in?
Please.
No?
Is ready to be a me, swear, tell the truth, the whole truth, and deliver the truth to help you God. I do. Thomas G. Sterns III, S.T.E.A.R.N.S., 144 Joel Street, Garfield, New Jersey.
Could you state some of your qualifications, please?
Yeah, sure, I'm a licensed engineer in state New Jersey, licensed land surveyor. I've been practicing engineering and surveying in the state for approximately 20 years. I've been admitted as an expert in engineering before this board several times. And I've been before many other boards in the state.
Okay, anybody have any questions or objections here? Okay, proceed.
Thank you.
Can you take us through what we're proposing to do here, Tom?
Sure, so this is my site plan dated March, sorry, 25th, 2025. It's 311 Walnut Street, Lot 4, Lot 4415. So this property is on the easterly side of Walnut Street, south of Lincoln Avenue. It's 100 by 100 lot, 10,000 square feet. There's an existing one and a half story dwelling on the site. That is 10, 989 off the northerly side, 1804 off the southerly side, approximately 25 feet off the front line and 34 off the back. The site has a topography, approximately 5% grade change from one side to the other. Grades are from 81 to 77. So our proposal is to remove that dwelling and several, several trees on the site. The site is fairly heavily wooded. We'll discuss the trees a little later. And our proposal is to construct a, a two-story building with a two-car garage, a 1,982 square foot footprint. We're going to have 1008 on the northerly side of the property, 3240, 3042 on the southerly. We have a front yard of 22, where 20 is required. And we have a rear out of 43. So our bulk requirements will comply. We're taking away one existing nonconformity on the existing house, the side yard. And everything else we're proposing is compliant with the site. We, we have a drainage system consisting of a seepage pit. And we submitted drainage calculations to Mr. Azalina and they were approved in his letter. Mr. Azalina, Mr. Azalina had a comment that there may be, since we're dropping the basement lower than the current basement, there may be some groundwater we encounter in the site. So we, there is a way to address that if that comes up during construction. There is an existing stormwater pipe on the easterly side of Walnut Street that Mr. Azalina said we could tie into as an overflow if need be. But that's, that's during construction. So currently, everything looks good as it is. We have to get a percolation test as well.
Mr. Sterns, Mr. Azalina's letter of today's date, have you had a chance to review that?
I did review it, yes.
Any issue addressing the technical comments raised there, Ren?
No, it seems like we just have to get a tree expert to identify trees that are hazardous and, and we'll remove them. And then we'll comply with any tree or arbor requirements in the, in the town.
Thank you, Mr. Sterns. I don't have any further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, what we normally would like to do is have Mr. Azalina go over his letter with, for the board's sake.
I'll be very brief, Mr. Chairman. I do concur with the testimony offered by Mr. Sterns. I do believe that the two primary issues here are, are the trees, which to my non-professional and non-arborist, but to me, some of those trees look like they are in fact dangerous. So I rely upon the certified arborist. There are a very large tree at the very front of, of the property, which typically would be removed. It's not shown to be removed on this plan, so that kind of caught my eye. But if the applicant, you know, I was just trying to be ahead of the curve because oftentimes what's happened is developers go beyond the approved plan and then it presents a whole nother set of problems. So just looking at the site, there are some trees in the rear yard that are clearly dead to me that should be removed but are shown to remain on this plan. But the, the one tree that really jumps out at me and I think others would be that 24-inch pine tree at the front of the property. So I would rely upon the certified arborist to, to make that determination. Then there are several other trees within the right-of-way that also are, they're marginally trees. They're, they're four to five to six inches. Under our code, a tree is six inches and larger. There's maybe one 10-inch tree that could remain. But once again, it's between the curb and the sidewalk, which those type of trees often cause problems with the sidewalk eventually heating. So I'll rely upon the testimony or the report prepared by an arborist to, to make those determinations. Otherwise, the, the plan as presented complies with the zoning, site design is proper. Potential for, for groundwater, as Mr. Sterns mentioned. And I believe we have a solution if, if we need to utilize it. Applicant has agreed to, to do that. So with that said, offer no objection to the board approving the plan as presented, subject to further review of the, the tree situation.
Okay, anybody else have any comments on the board? Mr. Stern, yeah.
So, um, how do we ensure that the bulk variances are met? This plan pushes to the absolute limit.
We'll have to provide an ASBIL survey as part of the closing out of the permits to confirm that the ASBIL condition matches what you see on the site plan.
It really wasn't addressed to you, but thank you for your comment, Mr. Azalina.
So that is my task is to confirm that these numbers are accurate. And what I have done is I reviewed the architectural drawings, compare them to what's presented on the site plan. And those, those numbers are consistent.
We can measure to 302 inches?
That's what the numerical analysis shows, which is based on this calculation as compared to what's shown on the architectural plans. So it's their burden to make sure that it is constructed to that extent. Typically, builders will build a little bit less to confirm that they're, they're not exceeding it. But what I have done is I've requested or required that they submit framing as built. So before they get too far along, that they confirm that the ridge elevation allows the home to be built to that standard.
Okay.
Typically, there's a, they will build six inches or, or less from that number.
Okay. And can you explain the construction of the retaining wall on the south side?
Yes.
Either, either on the engineer?
Yeah, sure. I mean, it's a, it's a modest wall. It's only, I believe it's only up to two feet high. So it's a stack block wall. It's just for, just for minor grading around the driveway.
So does it, does it have a purpose for, to retain water onto the property?
Like those both, yeah. So it'll, it'll keep the driveway level and it'll retain water from going to the neighbor at that location also.
And is the lower level, is it going to be gravity-fed into the sewer?
That I don't know because that is one of the pieces of information that I requested was an invert elevation coming out of, out of the dwelling, which possibly could because the sewer in the street is, is very deep, about nine feet deep. So they may be able to do that. But if not, you would introduce an injector pump into the basement, pump it up and then out by gravity to the sewer.
And that's atypical?
No, a lot of new homes have finished basements with, with bedrooms as, as this home does. So quite often you do have ejector pumps in, in the newer construction. The older homes, not, not so much.
I may interject, they do show an ejector pump on the, the architectural drawings.
Yeah, that's only because they didn't know for certain that they're getting into, into the sewer, which-
I see, I see. And when does that get resolved?
Well, that's one of the questions I had for Tom is to tell me what invert elevation they think they're coming out of the home. I gave him the ASBIL, which will allow him to calculate the, the slope of that pipe and where they would be entering in the street. And from that, it can be determined whether the pump is necessary or not.
Okay. And the stormwater management section, specifically number three, the applicant is however required to provide appropriate surface drainage measures. Does that, have we received that?
Yes, I've gotten the calculation, which as Mr. Sterns indicated, we've reviewed and approved. My comment is that that addresses simply the rooftop area, basically, that my report says any seepage, you know, groundwater condition that may be observed, that would need to be either another system or possibly constructing that overflow from the, from the seepage pit into the storm drain so that, that could be accomplished. Which is really the best way of handling it, you're, you're adding a recharge element to, to the design.
And when, for the demolition, when do we have to have asbestos and lead testing completed?
That's all part of the demolition permit application handled by the building department. So there's rodent, asbestos, a couple of the, you know, gas utility shut-offs, which I think have already taken place based on my site visits. So those are all the purview of the building department.
So this has to be approved here before the-
Correct, they, they won't consider issuing demo permits until they have this prior approval from this board.
Okay. And just one last question to the applicant. Is this going to be owner-occupied or is this speculative?
It's, it's not going to be owner-occupied, it'll be for sale.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay.
Someone online.
Okay. Yeah, we're ready for open public. Okay, I need a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
So moved, second, second, okay. Anybody in the audience have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think there's someone online that has, has a question.
It was John Reed.
Hi, are you going to hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, thank you. My name is John Ram. I'm the next door neighbor. I'm at 311 Washington. I mean, well, no, I'm sorry. Just want to make sure, I mean, I think I've heard there's no variances. So they won't be encroaching on my property any further than what's currently existing, is that correct?
That's correct, right. No variances. No variances.
All right, great. And then just in regards to the trees, this was mentioned before, there's, there's a lot of trees on this property. And I can't imagine how you'd be able to do any real building there without having to get rid of quite a few. Is there any more detail on which and how many trees will be removed?
So I can answer that. So once we hire, we're going to hire an arborist that's going to look at every tree on the site and give us a detailed analysis and a tree plan.
Got it. Is that something I'd be able to review at any point or?
It'll be on file with the building department, sir.
Okay, and that's something I would have access to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thank you. And I mean, I don't know if this is a reasonable question, but just knowing from experience, when a massive construction like this takes place, often rodents, termites enter into other properties. Little concerned about that. Is there anything that can be done preemptively to prevent that?
As Mr. Azalina had mentioned a moment ago, there are certain task lists that need to be addressed before we demolish, demo the property. And I, I believe, termites at least is, was one of the categories that have to be dealt with.
Rodent abatement primarily.
Okay.
Rats, mice, et cetera, yes. That, that's all part of the demo application.
Okay, and I did notice about maybe a month or two ago, there was something removed from the, I want to say north side of the house. I'm assuming maybe it was an oil tank or, because I believe the previous owner did have oil heat. Is that correct?
So there was an oil tank removed from the, from that side of the house, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and I'm assuming that metal code and there's no concerns around that or any spillage or leakage or anything to that matter?
Right, it, it was done by environmental company and it, it was satisfactorily removed, yeah, without issue.
Okay, great. And then just another question, I mean, just from lack of knowledge or experience, is there anything else from your knowledge or experience that I- is there anything else from your knowledge or experience that I should be concerned about with this new building?
From a zoning perspective, it complies with all the zoning ordinances, and we, the board engineers issued a review letter that has made certain technical comments, all of which will be addressed.
Okay, thank you, and I believe Mr. Azalina had mentioned the trees that border the street just in front of the curb. Do we know, because I think he said like, he would think they would likely be removed, but is that still TBD?
Correct, that our arborists will perform an assessment and advise which of those street trees can remain and which should be removed.
Okay, any idea on timing of all this, when it might start to take place, and how long it may take?
No, I mean, as far, we certainly want to move on the project as soon as possible, so we have a vested interest in getting going, as soon as you may want us to take care of those trees, so do we.
Okay, yeah, listen, it's, you know, like, you know, listen, I've been here for the whole meeting, so I've heard what everyone's saying about this town and the trees and loving it as it is, so just hoping that not too much is taken down, anything that's dead, of course, but just hoping that it's nothing overly excessive, and if that was required, they would need to get a permit or come before this, before that, this board, before this could be done, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, and any tree that comes down, we have an ordinance that they have to plant two trees in replacement of the tree that comes down, okay? And also, just so you're aware, you could contact the zoning, planning board secretary for any of this information, a copy of these things that you might be interested in finding, she'll, she'll be able to provide that for you.
Okay, thank you, and will a copy of the plans that you guys have in front of you, will that be posted on the township website in the, in the meeting notes, by any chance?
Yeah, they're online right now.
They are, okay. All right, I think that's everything, I really appreciate you answering those questions, thank you.
Okay, no, no problem.
If I may, I have a question for the neighbor, do you have an opinion relative to the six trees that are along the sidewalk and the curb line?
Yeah, listen, I don't, they haven't been particularly manicured, and I've noticed anyone who tends to park along that area has some issues with it. Anything that's a taller vehicle tends to hit them. Listen, if the owner wants to keep them, that's fine, but I don't have any particular love for them. In the end, I'm just hoping that it's, you know, a very nice home that's built there that increases the beautification of the street and the town, and, you know, if removing those trees helps with that, I'm fine, but I don't have any objection to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ream.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Bill, this is a quick question. You know, with every application, for every site application, we always require a landscape plan. Was the landscape plan submitted with this application to Mr. Ream's point?
Yes, that's shown on, the site plan has a planting list, which I review it in my report, but I'll read off the plan. So they are proposing shrubs, which are azaleas, junipers, boxwood, crevice hedge, then the trees are 11, no, 12 green giant arborvitae along the driveway, screening the neighbor to the south, and then two deciduous trees, which are alegany service berry trees.
Okay, the five plans I have do not have a landscape plan. I understand from your report, you mentioned the vegetation shrub that will be planted, but it's always been the practice of this board to see a detailed landscape plan and where those shrubs and vegetation will be planted.
Yes, the drawings that I referenced in my report, which is the site plan dated March 25th, 2025, as Mr. Sterns just testified to, does in fact depict in plain view, under the site plan detail, the, the location of the trees and shrubbery. The two service berries are basically at the corners of the dwelling, and then you have the, what I'll call foundation plantings, which are the shrubbery along the front perimeter of the dwelling, and then the 12 arborvitae are along the, along the retaining wall, basically.
Okay, my apologies, I, because I'll lay it back to all my documentation here, so I'm looking at it now, thank you.
If I, if I may ask one more question, is there any detail there, and I'm sorry, I will take a look at the plans, but is there any information on what will be put along the north side of the property that borders mine? I have several hedges there, I have a massive oak tree that is on my property, but several of the branches obviously go into the property of 317, and I just, will there be any impact to that tree? I'm not sure what the rules are in terms of where branches go over into other properties.
My understanding of the law is that this property owner would have the ability to cut those limbs at the property line, obviously, they want to be neighbors with you, so I'm sure they would, you know, work out whatever is agreeable to both parties, but currently the plan does not depict any extensive landscaping along the northerly boundary, other than a row of shrubs around the AC condenser units, which are on that side of the dwelling.
Okay.
Your property is higher than their properties.
Yes, yes, correct, okay, so then what you're basically saying is they could really just by law, any part of my oak tree that encroaches onto their property or past the borderline, they would be allowed to take anything off of that?
At property line theoretically, but, you know, I'll assume that the builder would talk to you first to do it in a proper manner, or Mr. Capizzi going to comment further on this?
Sir, my suggestion would be, if I can have you give your information to the board secretary, and then I can have you put in touch with my clients, and you guys can meet at the site and discuss these issues and come to an understanding.
I'd really appreciate that, thank you.
And then, sir, you mentioned you're on the northern side, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you're, the fence is not on a property line, so just so you're aware of it.
The fence is?
It's, it's well onto your side of the.
It is, okay, well, that's good to know. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions, comments? Great, I guess we need a motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, public portion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So now we need a motion to? Yeah, need a motion to approve the application? Make a motion. Second, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question before we vote, how does the board want to deal with the arborist report, is that going to be up to Paul, or usually we leave it up to Paul?
The arborist, the new report, after he gets the arborist in there, yeah, do you, do you want to handle that, or should that come back?
If the board's agreeable to that?
We have it in the past.
More than willing to do it, work with the.
Everybody okay with that?
The professionals.
Okay.
Can we just, all of reviews it, just for?
So your arborist report should go back to Paul. That would be terrific, thank you, okay.
We just make that part of your motion?
Okay, all right. We ready? Okay, okay, we're going to need a motion to vote on this with the arborist report being sent to Paul when it's done. Do I hear a?
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion. Second, in a second, okay. Grace, you want to do the call?
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Colito?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
Mr. Wojnarzki?
Yes.
Councilman Almond?
Yes.
Mayor Kalamari?
Yes.
Chairman Savino?
Yes.
Okay, it's been approved.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, all good night.
Okay. Okay. The minutes are not ready, going to have to be table till the next meeting, do we need to have a motion for that?
Um, no, that's fine, just you announced it.
Okay.
I showed you.
All right, just so everybody might not have heard this, the minutes on the schedule are not quite ready, so they're going to be table till the next meeting, okay? All right, very good. Any board member have any issues before we wrap it up? Anybody have any?
The meeting went much better.
Thank you for your patience. Okay, so I guess it's a motion to, okay, I need a motion to adjourn the session, please? Make a motion, second, okay, adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you for everybody's patience.